Good evening. We'll call the special meeting of the North Willoughby Pole Park Recreation District to order at 6:10 on Monday, November 26. All commissioners are present, as are the Director and Mrs. Julie Mullane. So, two agenda items. The approval of the minutes from the September 27th meeting, regular meeting, and the budget. We'll do the approval of the minutes from the September 27th meeting first.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to make a motion that be approved in the minutes of the 27th of September, so vaguely written by yourself, when you weren't here.
Awesome. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next thing on the item is the budget for 2019.
I'm sorry, I was doing minutes tonight.
I started taking notes. I'll do special minutes, special meetings, because it's, you know, you guys get stuck with the big ones.
Okay.
So, and Mr. Harden.
I think technically it was your time anyway, but...
No.
No, I don't, I don't, I think, did Shane, didn't he do it last meeting?
I did it last.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have to translate my notes, I'm good.
So, the budget, and I will be taking minutes tonight, the budget for proposed, the proposed budget for 2019. Director, Rex, please.
Okay. We had a really interesting meeting this morning. It must taste nice to be back from the dead. And that Coolville I'm talking about, the last five days, I cannot talk. In our Coolville meeting this morning, we met with the larger office there, and they gave us instructions on how to go through and develop the numbers for the levy, which we did before. So the new levy numbers, we're looking at, the assessed valuation of the district is approximately $4.2 billion, which gives us a difference in our levy estimate of $840,000, which is quite a difference. So that made a big difference in, in the budget that we submitted last week, and so there are some changes that we made that I can highlight for you. One, if you'll make note of this, the advertising, they added $3,000. They added $500 for the cell phone.
Can you, sorry, can you just wait for us to, or tell us what page it's on?
Yeah.
So, they're all expenses, obviously.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to get us there.
Okay.
Okay, so advertising is in the middle of page six.
Cell phone's on page four.
Cell phone, $500 for cell phone, and then how much for the advertising? I'm getting the rates.
$3,000.
$3,000?
It went up $3,000.
Went up $3,000, copy. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Rex, I'm sorry.
Major equipment, $10,000.
Is that the major equipment purchased?
Correct.
So it was this morning, it's going to be 30?
And minor purchases, great.
Okay.
So it's just those three things? Okay, thank you.
We haven't had time to really go through any of those issues, just information we got this morning.
Very good news. It rains inside in quite a few places, so, it's nice.
So are we going to, sorry if I'm jumping the shark here at all, but are we going to go through this?
I would hope so, yes.
Okay, okay, I just wasn't sure what, I didn't know if we were waiting on something to do yet.
Yep. I was, I had a question, and I was just looking for something. If you're anxious to start off, you may go right ahead.
Well, usually, I mean, the way that we've been, I'll just put it this way, the way that we've been doing it for the past couple of years is the Director goes through it and kind of gives an explanation for the, for, you know, for each of the items, or as needed. You know, maybe not everything needs to be sold into, but that's kind of how it's presented to us. And then we ask questions like page by page, just so that we kind of all, it's fresh. That's the way we have done it. We have a different process, we can do that too.
I'm all for doing it the way we've done it the last couple of years.
I like that.
So let's, let's start with our, the proposed, we're looking at the proposed 2019 budget that Rex has, and Julie have worked on, and Rex, if you want to take us, starting on page one, and if you want to have Julie speak for you instead, so you keep your voice to answer questions appropriately, that might be a better idea, so Julie, if you want to lead, lead out here so that we can...
Okay, so as we already discussed, we adjusted the property tax value for the levy to the $840,000. For daily admissions, punch cards, passes, swim lessons, aerobics, we adjusted by 60% figuring it will be closed for the period re-lined pool, and it will probably be June before we really resume pool operations. So, that puts us at 50%, and then with the closures sometime prior to that reopening, we're not sure just how quickly we'll be able to rebuild with a limited schedule, so we chose to go conservative with 60% for revenue in comparison to 2017. Hopefully, we'll be loud and out of the ballpark on that, but we just wanted to be conservative.
And remind me just again, how long we're going to be closed for, for the relining? What's the proposal there?
Probably four to six weeks.
Four to six?
Right.
So, and I'm hopeful it's more four than six?
Me too.
Okay, thank you. And what timeframe are we looking at for that?
The second week in April.
Second week in April, and then so we'll go through April to May, and that'll be after the high school boys' swim. I just want to make sure that we're, we're taking care of our community partners. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
And it will also allow us to reopen through spring break, which is a little popular sometimes for families with kids and whatnot.
And then we'll reopen before the summer. That'll be excellent. Okay, thank you.
Our classes, that's a little bit of a question, because we currently don't have anybody who has the certification to teach those courses. We do have a couple of possibilities though for that, so we're really hopeful that we'll be able to go ahead and add those back in. But that's pretty much it.
And so those are all 60%?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And 60% of the actual?
Yeah, 60% of the actual January, December 2017.
Further questions on page one by the board? Excellent. Page two, please.
On page two, we did opt to remove the running club as a line item. In the past, when we tried to restart that, it's been a hard thing to get restarted, and right now, the conversations that Rex and I have had, possibly focusing a lot of splash camps or summer camps for kids versus the running club right now. If something were to come along where we can do that, we could look at adding that back in the future. We took scuba out. Pat has sadly closed the dive shop, and we don't really anticipate being able to have the scuba classes in here.
Question. Going back up to special events and programs, we took that to 4,000? So we didn't do the same thing with that that we did with everything on the course?
And Rex and I discussed it, and the reason that I was in favor of leaving it at 4,000. In 2017, we were at 2,300. We missed out on three events that are usually good income generators because of the levy situation and our closure.
And what are those three events?
Funnet swim, our fall event around Thanksgiving time, and the Santa swim. And between those, I'm pretty confident that we would be really close to about $1,000. And there's also a couple of other events that, or new events that we'll be looking at doing that would probably definitely put us to that number.
So, I personally would like to see us be conservative on that. And I believe I've, as I listen to other minutes, talking about budgets, I know we've all mentioned that we want to be more conservative than we, I'd rather have more money to go into reserves than I'd have to, at the end of the year, go, wow, where are we going to find that from? So, from my perspective, and I'd like to know the rest of the board's perspective on this, I'd like to be as conservative with special events as we were with the rest of the events on page one.
I agree. What was, do you know what the number in 2016, since 2016 was a whole year, what was the number generated in 2016?
I'm not sure of the...
And I would say also, because I noticed that the special events didn't have any expenses put against them, and it's like...
No, they did.
No, I looked, I didn't see it, it's zero.
On page seven, on my direct programs, those are the programs we can add in.
There's one that's...
Yeah, see, I think you're looking in the rule section.
I'm aquatic.
But those shouldn't be, those are, those things you mentioned as special events, those are aquatic, so, and it's somewhat of a mismatch in that respect.
Well, and I think that we have a coding issue within the P and L. I know that, for example, in the 2017, the $1,274 also included the money that was spent at Splash Camp.
Right, and that's what I would expect, that's what I would expect that to be, because it says it's not aquatic. So, I think, you know, somewhere, that's where, and I know I've said this ad nauseam to anybody who's been for a long period of time, but drawing those lines so that we can see them better with either a description or a key code card, which we shouldn't need, but like a decoder ring, just so that not only we, but it's really also about anybody in the public who wants to see this and understand it, that would be helpful.
And I don't know if this is the appropriate time for this, but something that Rex and I have talked about is moving forward, starting with this budget, as an addendum to the P and L, we want to craft something that will be more user-friendly for the public, that will draw those side-by-side in.
Agreed, and it also is not the time to talk about QuickBooks or this and that, another way to format this. I think that is definitely something we all agree on going forward. However, looking at the special events, like, now that we know that line item, we've drank our over the team, and we got our decoder ring out, as Commissioner Shingleton said, we know what that is, so I still, unless there's other discussion from the board, I'd like to see special events come down to 60%.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I think, I think we need to see more special events. I think special events could be such as a Military Appreciation Day, which, you know, thanks people for their service, but also, you know, figures out a way to bring new people in, makes, makes it where you're a part of people's routine, and then you fully execute the MWR contract, and maybe it grows. That said, this policy versus day-to-day operations, I think many of those events can be done at a profit. So, I want to see more special events, but I also think that the amount could come down like you think.
Okay.
And this is just, Mr. Chair, our guess of what we're going to generate.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, Commissioner Shingleton.
Right, I actually agree with both points of view, and the reason is that I believe we ought to be conservative for what we know at this time, but as we also know, there is a planning that needs, there is a strategic planning that needs to take place first for next year and then beyond, and that's where I think, I think without a plan, I think we don't blow out the budget, because we don't understand why. Right? We don't say, we want this to be $12,000, and I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying that we, we don't ask for that and say, well, that's, what is that going to be? We'll define that later. I think we keep it conservative now, and then once we define what those things are, because those are strategic items, right? So, once we define what we think that that plan looks like, that's when we modify it to include those things. So I think it's both. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Harden?
I absolutely agree with you.
Okay, so let's...
And if we're going to be more conservative on that, should we also be more conservative on Splash Camp? Again, if we're, you know, maybe we'll make $6,000 bucks at Splash Camp, that would be awesome, but let's not guess that we're going to, because we don't know right now.
Agreed. Commissioner Harden, I cut you off, I apologize. Did you have more to say?
No, I did it.
Since you brought that up, I don't really know what Splash Camp is, so...
Swim camp for kids in the summer.
So it's...
That's right, right?
It's a swimming program.
It combines swimming with crafts and snacks and games, and so we lumped in the Splash Camp, just for purposes of not having a separate line item in the, that we're using. Other camps that wouldn't necessarily be aquatic, these camps, but just summer camps in general for kids, camp activities for kids.
So I think that goes back to, if I may speak for Commissioner Shingleton again, that goes back towards the strategic plan, let's have the budget represent 60% down across the board for projections, for like Splash Camp and for, I just lost my train of thought, special events, to represent the same thing we're showing on the front page. Until we develop that, that strategic plan and defines how we're going to use other camps outside of Splash Camp, like you said, this summer, let's bring those down.
Okay, so that brings that to 2,700, and special events to 4,000.
So Splash Camp is what?
2,700.
2,700, and what was special events?
1,400.
1,400, thank you. All right, moving on.
The party rentals, we did reduce down. Concessions, I think we reduced, we did, we reduced that down by the same. The high school contract is based on the current contract.
Okay.
And they have, so they pay part of it, they pay monthly, but it spans two years, but when we ran the numbers, it was essentially the same split again versus the, even though it will go up a little bit more in next year's. Blue Hare Booster Club, that 58 number, it is based on, remember, and it's based on their current lane charge and their lane usage. It's based on their current lane usage, but it may adjust as they have need on additional space on the 13 pros.
And that's at 750 a lane?
I don't...
We're strong page two. How much is that for? Same lane amount, lane charge that we're charging the high school, correct?
No, it's a lot less.
It's a lot less.
A lot less.
What's it based on?
Way too much less.
Based on last year's, I don't know, uh, last year, three before, which was 650, and so we revised it to 750. And that was up through December 31st.
Okay.
So, there, we can negotiate.
So, the current contract with the Blue Hare Booster Club, which I think only has four families and nine swimmers, last time I asked, is, is $7.50 cents a lane hour, because they provide their own lifeguard too, correct? And we don't even need a CA for, correct? All right, so different, different dynamic, however, how much is the difference between Oak Harbor High School and them for lane hours?
17.
So it's 17 for Oak Harbor High School, and 7.50 for the Blue Hare. And that's with the current contract. And so the projection for next year on this is using the current contract at $7.50 until December 31st, correct? Okay, so for now, those are the numbers, if we want to go into contract negotiations after December, that's something we can discuss at the next meeting.
Okay, I'm just looking at these numbers, and they're so inequaled, that it's like...
How many lane hours, and there's a good question, since you mentioned it, how many lane hours, what's the difference in lane hours between what the high school uses and what Blue Hare uses? Is there more or less, or?
So, the high school is using five lanes for two hours a day, and Blue Hare is using, I believe, a maximum of three for one and a half, well, anywhere between one and two and a half hours.
Commissioner Shingleton?
Oh, I was just going to ask, I mean, it sounds like there are questions that we can't entirely answer here, and that we're not prepared to have that discussion, I would ask us to, to have that, have the discussion at an appropriate time. I don't think this is it.
Agreed, agreed. So we'll table, no, that's a very good point. We'll table that, Commissioner Holly, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to table further, we'll use the assumption of 5,800 for the Blue Hare Booster Club right now. Thank you. Moving on.
Cool, your rentals and retail, we did the same 60%.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions on page two from the board? Moving on to page three.
On top of page three, you can see that our total income production is just a little bit over a million dollars, and then onto salary and wages. The executive director, we did it the 60% amount, I think Rex had some thoughts about that.
I would hope so.
So all talks about his voice for a minute?
There was, there was any direction that I could see, it was a co-op on the board, so I just put that in, and it makes them the same 60% that we used in the other figures.
Okay, so we, this is, this is maintaining the hours you're currently...
It wasn't, it wasn't even that, it wasn't even that, it was based on 60%, because right now, it's not 60%, it's 50. Like, right now, I'm, I'm contracted at 20 hours, give you 40 hours, that's a hundred percent, and 60% would be an additional, I think, 60 cents.
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Shingleton?
So, at the, at the current rate, for a full year, at 50%, at the 50% of FTE, at the, at the current rate, that would be 24, but I think, I actually think this number is a little low, only because I think for planning purposes, you know, we don't know exactly how, how we're going to move forward next year, I think it would be better for us to project more, even if we, even if we said 50% at your current rate, and 50% at the previous salary rate, maybe, does that make sense? Because, because we know we're not going to be without, right? Or, or something like that, and so that would be more like, I think, like 42 or something like that, maybe? I don't know, did I make that up? I might have. It would be about 42.
I love you, love it.
Duck it off, and I know it's not that big of a difference, but I, I think we would...
No, I agree.
Okay, so...
I definitely agree.
So where, so Pat, the look on Commissioner Harden's face is where in the world did that number come from? So, I would go with 20 times, 25 times, I just went with six months, and so that, you know, so 20 times, 25 times, four times, six, is approximately 12,000. And then, if I said, okay, previously it was, we were at 60,000, and that's 30, so 30 and 12, 42.
So, but now it's at 58, and you said...
It's at 35 right now.
It's 35, 50.
It's at 35.
Oh, okay.
So, so that represented a full salary of a, of a, of an exempt full-time benefits director, and, and that's not our current situation, and while we don't know what, you know, we haven't figured out that plan for next year, because we haven't talked about it as a group, you know, if, if we just said six months and six months, and, and if you think it needs to be different from that, you have information that we don't, feel free to adjust it accordingly, but that's what I would go with as a guess.
How much did you want to make it?
I was suggesting 42, but if anyone else has a better number, I'm cool with that too.
I mean, information such as how many hours he can work, or what are, what are we looking for there to go along with it?
We're not saying that.
Right, and, and I think that's another, it's a separate discussion.
Yes, that is a separate discussion. And I, I think looking at, doing the political tango that I understand that we're trying to do right now, without having a discussion about something that is not on the agenda, which is basically what I'm saying to the rest of the commissioners, we cannot have a discussion about something that's not on the agenda, so it has to be a budget-only discussion. I think upping 35 to 42 is being quite safe and almost a little conservative, so...
To me, it is conservative.
I have no problem going, going with the, to be quite honest, I'll say this out loud, I, I would much rather see us go with the preliminary budget, which I think was based on closer to the actual from the year before.
It was the actual.
And so I would, I would see us, I would have no, I personally, Commissioner Merritt would have no problem going with 58, 432, and going over, and, and then if we have to scale it back, it's much easier to scale it back and give a reason why to the taxpayer than it is to come back and say to the taxpayer, oh, we forgot, we really do need a director full-time, or whatever the question may be that we have at a further point, you know, so I'd like us to see that number at 58, 432. Unless...
I agree, I think that's, that's the conservative thing to do.
Yes.
Agreed.
It doesn't seem relevant. It doesn't seem to fit into our limited operations to me, but the budget can be right and sound at the end of the year, it's not, it's not of an issue.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that, so, you know, we would expect to continue the previous trend of quarterly reviews, and then the other, so at a minimum, I think we would make an adjustment mid-year, right? So, things that, things that we're way off on.
Yes.
Right? That's, and so that would be a minimum, if, if it came to April, and there was something that we were way off on, and we were like, man, we are headed for trouble one way or the other, then we're probably going to change it earlier. But, I mean, that's what I would expect to do, that's the normal thing to do, so, so really, this is a, our best guess, and then we can address it, absolutely.
So let's go high on that, thank you. We're all in agreeance. Moving down from the executive director, we've got an aquatic director, you built that in, looking at, yes, Commissioner Holly.
I have a question on that. Do we need an aquatic director? And I, I think that's part of the budget discussion, because...
So, we put a line item there, and I don't think that Rex has certainly yet whether he wants to go throughout with one person that's in charge of lifeguards and swim school, or whether he wants to split that between a swim school coordinator and a head lifeguard position. The simplicity, we just lump them together right there, but that would be the dollar amount that we split between the two. He just isn't quite sure yet what, how he wants that to look.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So the other, just in case, and this is for Commissioner Holly, if you look down at the, at the head lifeguard position...
I saw that was figured out, I can understand.
And that was, that was me, me expressing it one way, which is, you know, before we had an aquatics director, it was, you know, there were, there were individuals who were doing that, and not just the title for that position. I mean, in, in one's or another, they've allotted a little bit more money, it's, it's a different bucket, and it can be, kind of seen a little bit, so...
Okay, no, then I'll...
Okay, I just want to make sure that you saw that there was an offset there.
No, and I did, and I wondered about it, but...
Okay.
Awesome. Further discussion? Client service specialist?
So we took that down, I believe the 60% from what it was on January 3rd, December We did the same thing for lifeguards, instructors, aerobics instructors, just based on the schedule that we'll be operating on, and the revenue projection. Some of those may end up, honestly, in my opinion, it might be smart to add a little bit to them, just so that, like, with the director position, we're not having to back water and explain why we needed more. And I see that because we're going to have a group of young staff members that are not familiar with our facility. We did bump up the training some, but they may need some additional hours and some additional guidance and oversight that aren't normally needed when they're more experienced. So in this first year, we may need to consider that.
Well, if we're going to bump them up now, it would be time to do it. Well, if we're gonna bump them up now, it'd be time to do it. Right, I mean, to set up that.
Yes.
So, what's the suggestion?
I think, well, I...
I think maybe 70% versus the 60%.
From 60 to 70%? If we're gonna be consistent with our rationale for each position, I believe that's the right thing to do also. I also will say, for the record, that going forward, I think a lot of our positions, we need to look at consolidating and a better way of managing and providing oversight. But now's not the time to discuss that as we're working on the budget, so let's, is there any disagreement with going to 70% on those? Being consistent with the director, going up in those numbers, we should also be consistent with the rest going up to 70% to reflect some...
I think there's some that we don't need to.
So, one thing in terms of, and you just mentioned it, combining positions, the director finance and director plant services position, well, positions, you might notice that it's kind of one number between the two. Rex did combine that, so that is already there in that way, which makes saves a couple of thousand dollars from what our actual work for 2017, and it's about a $4,500 savings, I believe, from what the budget number, original budget was for 2017. To shame to Commissioner Hallmark's point, your lifeguard training instructor, if we have a person to run those courses, and that's the big question, if we have someone to run those, that number might be one that we would want to keep it, maybe even at the full amount if we had a person. The thought was that we're not gonna have a person right away, which is why we went ahead and put it lower. The kayak instructor number, it's gonna be pretty stagnant where it is. We calculated that based on what Pete is already anticipating while offering for taxes next year, and he already knew that, so that's one that I would adjust.
Those are the three that I was on as well, and the first one being that it was your position specifically. I didn't wanna mention it, so thank you.
And I actually do have a concern about combining those, and I realize that might be a separate thing, but for accounting purposes, I think that we should continue to split them out. And I think that there are reasons for doing that. I can certainly take that line, but I think we should not combine them. And I'm not saying that the same person can't be doing the position, but we do have, in our employee handbook, we do have two separate positions with two separate pay bases. But additionally, when we are fully operational, it is more than a one-person job. And so, I think that's where my concern comes in, is I think that might be a little bit short-sighted, but I don't know how to, if I'm getting off track, I apologize. I don't mean to. I don't know what else to do.
Now, so something to think about going forward, do we have the number in there to separate that? Does that number reflect?
We...
I know you said it's a cost savings of 4,500, so...
Not to try not to veer from the published agenda for this, we have had discussions of how we can mitigate that and how we can make it work, and it is something, it's the way that it used to be.
Okay, so is the 4,500 reflected in the budget that's saved?
We did not put that 4,500 in.
Okay, so then, for the purpose of the budget, can we please see two separate numbers, one for each position that reflects the 70%, please?
These are greater, these were greater total than 70%.
Oh, it is a greater total. Can you take the greater total and just separate, then? Take the 4,500 back in?
So, what I would do, honestly, would maybe need to put the 4,500 over into director of plant services, because when it does become the point where it does need to split and have some of the gain of some of that, that would probably be sufficient to cover that for the upcoming year, especially based on limited operations per part of the year. So, if we just move that 4,500...
Where did we get 4,500? Because I see about 2680. So where's the 4,500 coming from?
Well, maybe, yeah.
Okay.
I think it was on the budget versus the actual. Maybe.
So, I used the prelim numbers. Oh, no, I did.
It's 2,600.
Yeah.
Or, you know, let's call it 270, but...
700, 600 under what we budgeted for in 17, I think that might be where the bigger number is coming from.
Yeah, so, on the budget for 2017, and I was reading wrong over here, that combined total for the two positions was 45,664 budgeted, and this would be 38,000 for the two, I think. The actual... The actual is 40,682, so that would be a $2,000 savings.
Okay, so...
So, we could put 6,000 even as a separate, I mean, for director of plant services, which would probably have a different position, I know at some point, but for purposes of reflecting it in here...
I'd like to see at least that, please.
Well, wouldn't you do it proportionally? I mean, is there, is there something? Okay, it seems like you would do it proportionally, so, you know, 22 is to 40 as, you know, as whatever is to 38. I mean, sorry, I can't do it off the top of my head in this case, but, actually, it should be 2117, I think it's on.
I know what the intent for 2018 was, if the lending passed the last year, so maybe for calculation purposes, basing it on that.
Why don't we just slide the prelim and their numbers over, and he can execute it however? When that gets close to the number everybody wants?
Those numbers, I believe, are based on 20 hours per week for each position.
I mean, that's basically what we're saying, even if the same person does it, we wanna see it separately?
Yeah. Let's just do that. Julie? I'd like you to take the prelim numbers and move those over, get rid of the 38.
So, that's gonna be 40, a little 40 out of them?
That's fine. Comments from the board? Commissioner Holly, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on to director maintenance? So, you put the director maintenance in at 36,000. Janitorial staff, does that include shutdown period?
That would be separate line item.
Okay.
That's the shutdown maintenance.
So, my question is, is the janitorial staff, does that include them being here or not being here during shutdown time?
The way that that's previously been done is that if they worked during shutdown time, they clock in, or they differ clock in, and it goes under shutdown maintenance, not the janitorial.
Okay. So, is $500 going to allow us, after shutdown time, to have the janitorial staff come back in and make the pool whole again before we open?
As long as the contractors are made to clean up whatever mess they make, probably.
He says yes.
Okay, yes. All right. Further questions on page three? Page four. Chairman, I saw that the executive director's sick pay is back in there to reflect.
Well, and this is one of these things that I don't think we're sure what to do with it yet, and how to compensate for it, because it's not just executive director sick pay, every single employee will now earn sick pay.
That's correct. With the new law, that is correct.
If someone doesn't use their sick pay, do we have to pay them money when they leave?
No, not necessarily.
But if, so it's the same thing, other than lifeguards, because lifeguard, lifeguard doesn't come, and we have to pay them for not being here, and we also have to pay somebody else to be here. So that's money that we're actually gonna have to pay. But for people like the employees who don't have a, someone to take their place, we've talked about this like a bazillion times.
You would just pay for them not being here.
Yeah, well, it's not money that we're out...
Exactly.
Extra.
You're not gonna account for it twice.
Yeah. So that, the vacation pay...
The employees that don't have a replacement.
All the vacation pay, we have to pay them eventually.
And the sick pay is kind of, the sick pay, I mean, the sick pay could be a liability when they leave, if their doctor signs a note. That's the scary part, you never know for sure. If their doctor signed a note for them to be off for three weeks or something.
Well, it's not that they haven't accrued that much.
Right.
Exactly, they're not gonna get more than that.
It's only a maximum, they're allowed. And they agree one hour per 40, if they work.
Is there a cap on what they're allowed to carry over within that law?
I don't recall.
I thought it was maybe 80 or something, but I'm not sure.
Okay, we'll look at that later. No, thanks. Yes?
Mr. Chair, my suggestion would be to make it a more, I mean, you can keep it at, you know, you can name specific positions, but to also create a bucket. And what I would do is, based on the number of hours, so again, this will be part of the operational plan, but the number of hours that we expect to be open, and therefore staff, it's like, you're still taking a swag, but like, we expect to be open 1,000 hours, and that would be this many people hours, and that would represent approximately this much sick pay, is how I would guesstimate it, and, you know, we're gonna have to revise it, but we certainly know that we need to show that number here, because it's gonna happen on this. And then, the other suggestion that got from a bookkeeper was, you know, we'll have to have a method outside of all of this for keeping track of that, right? So it'll have to be a separate system, whether it's a spreadsheet or whatever it is, but we'll have to be an extra something to show who's accrued what and who's used what.
It automatically happened, it's in another rule.
Okay.
And I think we can front a separate people's...
Okay. Okay, gotcha. Okay, good. Then it's probably, then it's even easier than I thought. Awesome.
So, looking at sick pay for the year, is $453.76 going to be adequate for the number of employees we normally have? And I do not feel that that is. So, I know we're taking a huge swag here, but we need to present that. And that is extremely hard to do under normal circumstances for most businesses going forward with an op plan, but for us, with shutdown, partial opening, in an environment we're not used to being in, going forward, this is going to be even harder to do. But I would propose adding a zero almost to that, just to be safe.
I think a thousand percent, you say zero?
Times 10.
Times 10, yeah. Make that $4,530, because I, once again, I would much rather be higher for the taxpayer than be lower, you know, and so, if we could change that to reflect that. Board, any other comments from the board?
Oh, we have three, I think we all three had the same thought, just three different ways to get in there.
Awesome. All right. Vacation pay, we're not putting any in, except...
The direction, the vacation pay, do we need to break out the director finance and plant services again on that one?
Yep.
Yes, we definitely should. So, can we break those down, move the prelim numbers over, get rid of the 760, and move the prelim numbers over for that one, please? Julie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Payroll taxes, this is something that's always gotten us, solid estimate on payroll taxes, Julie, or...
So, we did, I can't remember what we did, because I know we adjusted it from the 60% to account for the positions that were, so, we used a higher number than the 60%, recognizing that not every position was down to the 60%.
I wonder if they just took S, put their formula down to that, I bet.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, what was it? I think that Commissioner Ford, who was Mr. 13%, is that correct? I think that's what he was, Mr. 13% about. Is that, am I accurate? Okay, I'm getting a really weird look here. I'm like, come on, people!
I mean, with the proposed versus the prelim, it's probably where they got their formula.
I would think 13 would be close, because you've got your social security to start with. What is that at?
76 or something, maybe.
I mean, so even if we went 15%, maybe, but we have to add back the inflations, and we did a couple of those here, right? Just a little bit, so, well, 23 about 25, so, if you did that, and you said 300, and you did 15%, you could count that as 45.
We did 65% of the salary wages, is what we did.
Oh, so you draw, so what we did is we just did 65% of the salary wages, and then took the 13 or 15% of that?
No, we reduced the preliminary number, the 50,205. That was based on 75%, I believe, and we did it based on 65% instead.
Well, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be 70, it wouldn't even be 70 at that number, because 70 would be 35,000. So, that would be probably 65% as well.
That's what I said.
Okay, sorry, I heard you say that you took 70% of 50,000.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I spoke then. Yeah, 65% of 50,000. Your, I think your 50,000 was 75% of...
Salary and wages.
From the original...
Oh, wait, I didn't, again, I use actual, I use actual, so...
Yeah, that was actual.
That's easy, right? You cut it.
You know, but if our total salary wages are up to approximately 300,000, we took 13% of that.
So I'm getting around 45.
That's what I, that was my, the two...
Yeah.
Probably gonna say that, yeah.
Yeah, it would be 13.
What'd you get for 13, Pat?
Well, let's see.
I just did math.
35, 8.
Well, if you add in, again, the...
I was using this number, the proposed, 275, 940.
Right, and we've increased that by over 25,000 on the previous page.
Which I added in.
Yeah.
Julie, let's change the payroll taxes to 45, please? Just to be safe, because in the past, that's one that's always come back to account. Once again, I'd rather go high, and our proposal won't have to do a quarterly readjustment to this, and say, hey, we're doing a lot better than we... Cell phone, you added in? Employee award program is added in at $240, so what's that based on?
So, that's 20 hours per month. In the past, we've been having an employee of the month where they got a gift card to Starbucks, or with a coffee or something like that. We talked about that as a possibility. We also talked about being able to do smaller incentives throughout the month, hey, you did a really good job, you know, have water bottles, stuff like that, just more recognition for employees to help with their lean around. You know, these people that come back, they are being true persons, they're working their little best off, and we really wanna make sure that we can recognize them, show appreciation within the confines of fully dollars.
Employee uniforms?
Employee uniforms, we put it in at 1,000. When I went digging through the cupboard for lifeguard shirts for people, I found one. We have no swim school rash cards, we have no lifeguard uniforms, we have nothing.
So how much are the rash cards?
I wanna say before, I can't remember what Erica paid the last time. It's been one of those since we ordered, and I wanna say they were 17.
Do we pay for them and then hand them out to people?
And they're supposed to get them back.
And so, obviously, that didn't happen, but they're...
And they do wear out over time.
And I know that, you don't want them to be running around in pink.
The rash cards, it's basically...
A long sleeve shirt.
Almost.
Yeah, and the full response is nice, because it really... Yeah, and the full response is nice because it knows where they identify instructors who have children, no parents.
Four man web suit, almost, it's strange, they're kinda cool.
Okay, so I know it's, um, Cyber Monday, so I'm getting all kinds of sales here on swimoutlet.com, uh, but, uh, anywhere between twenty-six and thirty-two dollars for a swim, for, for a rash guard. So, if we go thirty bucks a rash guard, how many do we need?
I'm so glad you pointed out what you were doing.
Yeah, you got it. If you looked at the phone, that would've been this.
I'm trying to recall if this was my hip, Erica, and then in the past, we knew that there was quantity discounts and you need them in a variety of sizes.
Right.
So I think what we did before was ten per size to get the quantity discount.
So how, how many...
And then that lasts over...
So how many rash guards did we order last time? Do you remember off the top?
I don't know.
So how many instructors do we normally have?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we might actually wanna look at, um, and again, this, this is out of bounds, someone can stop me, but we might wanna look at a reimbursement program instead with a maximum amount to have someone by their own.
That I'm much more familiar with than I can.
And, and in this case, we would still need a number here, but it would be the, unless we have a spec for them, or, or if we do, here's the color it needs to be, or whatever.
And we do.
Okay. And, and, I mean, that might be a way of looking at it instead of trying to build up the number, it's really, hey, what are we gonna need to...
So what's our max employee numbers? Part-time employees, lifeguards, lifeguards, yeah, lifeguards projected.
Oh, projected.
Yes.
We have, um, thirty.
Probably, between some instructors and lifeguards, yes.
Thirty projected? Oh, that's easy. Okay, so, that number is perfect then, good job. Well done. All right, major equipment purchases, you mentioned that to begin with, you added that in. Um, aquatic equip, yes, ma'am, I am so sorry.
No, no, it's okay, but, but it was, I don't think that was ever explained what, what that includes, because previously, major, as you can see, by three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and this isn't, this isn't just a matter of, oh, but in twenty-seventeen, it's, it's never been utilized for actual major equipment purchases, so, so I didn't, like, when I did, when I did the one, I put this stuff below because I didn't think it fit here, because I didn't know how that defined, so, I think an explanation would be great.
So this primarily consists of replacing scoreboard and the pads, uh, which were required mainly for high school swim team, and then it also includes money for replacing, and we weren't quite sure where to put this, so we, um, do it in here, we can always look it out, um, for further detail later, uh, by replacing two computers, replacing our server and, um, replacing the router and some of our good for internet, it's all broken into that.
So, for a high school swim team, scoreboard, the pads, the computer, that's used?
Yes.
Right? That's only gonna cost us under thirty thousand?
Um, yeah, I think twenty thousand has been a burden we've received for that.
Really?
This makes it very profitable. I mean, I mean, it, it can be used for them, it can be used for other swim clubs as well, and I think the most important thing to remember there is that the, I've seen swim meets with six hundred people in this building before, the swim meets can make a lot of money. Uh, I know we've had the LTAC, we've had the LTAC conversation for years, uh, in the past, and I hope this is the, I hope this next November is the year that we go ask for LTAC money, because a two-day swim meet could get a pretty fat check, just like, I mean, for the music festival, for instance, the LTAC, they write a twenty thousand dollar check or something, because it's putting heads in beds, it's bringing people to the hotels, a two-day swim meet does the same when you're bringing people from Canada and Tacoma, et cetera, um, so, I, I know we've, we've all looked at Anna Cortes' budget before and, uh, they're able to do a lot of what they do from the profits that they turn off of swim meets, so, without the scoreboard, it's really hard to have a swim meet, so...
Do they last many years?
Oh, I think, what?
Um, it depends on the timing system, so I'm looking at Colorado Timing System right now, it's one of the, it's the one that's used at Federal Way, um, and unfortunately, which always makes me worry, um, Colorado Timing System says, you know, contact us for a quote, so they won't even list their prices. Um, I, I know that the, um, Timing Council, Council itself, sorry, that's a big Midwestern football on my part, um, the Council is, uh, is quite expensive, so I'm glad we're under twenty, but is that realistic with the new board, or is that, you know, using the board, and do we wanna pass, how much of that cost do we wanna pass on? I mean, quite frankly, the district was, um, you know, really encouraging about coming back to the pool, um, you know, they need it right now more than any other program, but, you know, and as you said, this may not be the time nor the place to discuss it, so that's what it's there for, and, and I guess I should remind myself that's what we're here to discuss, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think that, I think what we need to do is, is, you know, before we leave here, just as we said, um, prior to having this conversation, is, uh, I, I think for me, the surprising part is, is to see and to hear that there are certain things being planned when we know that there are, um, at least commitments for things like ninety-five dollars in maintenance, and I don't see that reflected on here, and I'm not being critical of it, it just feels like an all or nothing, so for me, I think there's that separate conversation that needs to be had with the planning for twenty-eighteen, so that one, we're all in the loop, and two, that we all agree with the priorities, um, and, and/or if there are suggestions for how we can offset certain costs, what we can do, that part, that would be part of that conversation as well, right? Suggestions for, and I've heard some of those things already, um, I, I have, I take no issue with, I think this number's fine, um, but I think that it's, I think that there are things that are missing in this budget, um, and that's part of that follow-on conversation, because there's no way we can have them in here right now, there's no way.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for clarifying what the major equipment purchases are, and we know that going forward, um, I agree with Commissioner Shingleton that thirty K, thirty thousand is a good place to start. Further discussion, Commissioner Hoffmeier, thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Good.
Commissioner Hollis? All right, any other questions about aquatics equipment rental expenses on down the bottom of the page?
Why do we need to, um, spend two thousand dollars on aquatics equipment?
I'm trying to think what we have, the other thing we have on our list. Um, some major things, and I can't remember what they're called, this is the non-swimmer speaking, the pool buoy?
Pool buoy.
Pool buoy, because between the legs to help the swimmers stay more...
It actually helps when you do, just do pools, so it keeps your legs from kicking so that the swimmer...
Okay.
We're not buying those for people, are we?
So, we did have a supply of them, there were different lap swimmers to use.
Uh-huh.
They have worn out, they've been tossed, uh, clippers, the, the fins, we had a supply of those, um, when I started here, there were trash cans over in corner, they were overflowing with the various sizes, um, we may have twenty-five percent left of what we had five years ago because they were out of their time, um, so it's an assortment of stuff like that. Um, the life jackets also go in there, and there are some of those, some of the sizes that we'll need replacing as we go.
So as a lap swimmer, for my own personal reasons, because I know where I put my pool buoy, I have my own. Um, but, I also think that as a district, we offer lap swims, I just curious as to, and, and when I go to Anna Cortes, there's no pool buoy there that's for me either, I, I have to bring my own, uh, same with my snorkel and my pool fins or my kick fins, so, um... Pools are different all over, whether they have those things or not, I just think, we're in a building here, I would, I, I don't think this is necessary, I would rather, if, if there's something that, you know, we really need to have some life vests for the children that can't swim, I would absolutely let's have that kinda stuff, but I think we could cut this two thousand down a lot.
Yes.
And the life vests that I, that when I was cleaning over there were, and really, I would say they almost all were replaced.
Well, and I think that we also included in this number things like, I remember when you were over there cleaning, or one of you was out there cleaning vegetables, and the pool noodles, the things like that, that, you know, we have consistently provided those for the enjoyment of the patrons coming to open swims, and those things require pretty regular routine replacement, because even though we scrub them and clean them overnight...
Kids, great.
Kids.
Yeah, we don't have to provide those, it's like... Yeah. Oh, the pads, yes. Um, we go with keeping this where it's at, or do we wanna take it down? I wanna take it down, at least half. A thousand for this year?
I think without, um, you know, the, the difficult part here is we're being asked to, um...
Right.
To conceivably approve this budget, and we're just finding out what's in it, and we don't have this anywhere in writing, and I'm not saying that anybody, that, that nobody's, it, it just, I would feel more comfortable if, if, you know, we have, we had time to look at it, but we didn't know what it consisted of, and so, I'm, I am more comfortable going conservative, and we can change it when these things are expanded and there are real costs associated with them, I would feel more comfortable with that approach, that's, sorry if I said that poorly, I, I didn't mean to offend anybody, um, because I know you worked hard on it, and it's just, it, it's secret and it's kind of, it feels like a scratch off a little bit, and, and that's a little bit difficult when we're, when, when I think we all feel the pressure of getting this done by the end of the month, and, and ideally, tonight.
Yeah, I think we need to go conservative on our expenses for consumables, and this is a consumable, and I think without presenting a plan to the public on where our consumables are going to be, and I know we, we, as Commissioner Shingleton said, we gave you two an enormous task in a short period of time, and you did a tremendous job, thank you very much, we are all grateful for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Very grateful. But without the consumables and a list of what we are going to spend those consumables on, in light of the fact that we had a lot of people working very, very hard to get our levy passed, we need to be very transparent with how we present those consumables, so in light of that, let's, let's be very conservative with these numbers, I think the board feels that we need to be conservative with our consumable numbers tonight, so we can define those, and, and we'll do that with an operating plan, and we'll move on with that next month, we know that, we have a little bit more time with, not much, but, we need to get that done right away too, but this, we are, are under some severe time constraints, so, with Commissioner Hollis' suggestion of moving that to one thousand at least, let's go ahead and do that, please. Any other questions on page four?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, the, the retail, actually, the retail revenue went down to sixty percent, but the retail expense went up to a hundred and something percent.
So, typically with retail and concessions both, they go from year to year, so I might get to December thirty-first, and I might have five hundred dollars of product left to sell moving into the new year when we're in that period where we have, you know, limited funds. Now, moving forward, I don't have a single pair of goggles to sell, so there's gonna be an initial low bulk investment to build that backup, um, so that's why there's that difference there. And, just as a footnote to that, typically for concessions and retail both, I place small orders that we sell, usually double what we're, um, purchasing for, and then as we start running low, I replenish just systematically throughout the year, so there's never any issue with us spending more than what we see.
No, I know, and I know you're really conservative about it, um, and, and we're just trying to understand the discrepancy.
No, thank you very much. Any further questions?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, cleaning and sanitation of, of twenty-three hundred dollars, just wanna understand what...
We went up pretty high on the cleaning and sanitation proposal, and actually on first aid, if you can go ahead and hit those up real quick, just so we have a better understanding, thank you very much.
I just don't think that there has been attention here to clean, and as you know, coming here, um, just what needed to clean the place doesn't exist.
Yeah.
And, and so that's part of it, and then, um, you know, we're, we're kinda piecemealing the, the kinds of, uh, like cleansers and things that we're using, and we could be much more efficient and, and provide a much cleaner environment than has been provided in the past.
I have absolutely no problem with that, and in fact, I think everyone welcomes it. The only question I would have is, does that then, would that reflect, um, a greater need in, um, uh, salary and wages anywhere? And, and so, if, if we think that it doesn't, that's fine, but, do you, I, I think you understand why I'm asking the question, right?
Yeah.
Okay, because, I mean, it's not just more, you know, I'm, I'll just make it up and say Windex, right? It's not just more Windex, because it doesn't just, it do it by itself, and so, do we need to adjust another number?
Yeah, like the custodial number.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause, cause I think we're doing things correct, I think we're doing things well now, um, and we need to maintain that level, and if we need to make an adjustment, then let's make the adjustment.
What was the budget report, forty hours?
Janitorial staff is for twenty-seven-nine, it's on page three.
Yeah, and if, we go with consistent, that's why, that's why I asked, is do we need to up it?
Do we need to up that?
It wouldn't seem so in the near future, at least, eleven minutes bad, so it might be August or something, we need to go.
I think, we just left it, the numbers that it had in, we just pulled it across, and, you know, there might be, um, you know, I think if we bumped it up to around thirty, that might be that much.
I think that would be real, yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna move, uh, janitorial staff up to thirty, on page three, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Yes, ma'am? Moving on to page five, event food, so... What event food are we buying, to the tune of three hundred dollars?
So event food, um, in the past, it's been used for things like when we did the Silver Snakers enrollment event, we serve refreshments, um, if we did a customer appreciation event, we might serve refreshments as part of that, um, it, it was never put in there for those types of things. You can see that we never actually use a whole lot of it, but that's what it was compared for. I think that also, like the little lollipops for swim school go in there, I don't know. I would say that the candy from when they did the tailgating event, mine, it would probably go in advertising though.
I mean, they, they would allow for a staff pizza party or a Christmas party or something.
No, it doesn't allow for staff events, it would have, no, it would allow us to serve refreshments to patrons at select times.
Okay. It's the only thing that's, so paid to that food.
Three hundred dollars is not a very big number.
Okay. All right.
It's a really nice thing to be able to do when you're hosting an open house, or, you know, us from school demo day and our kids demo day.
Just, yeah, just wanted an explanation, because we went from ninety dollars and fifty-four cents to three hundred.
And part of the reason for that increase is really is we're rebuilding programs and welcoming people back, we want to be able to do that.
There you go. Office supplies, kinda like the cleaning supplies?
Kinda like the cleaning supplies, um, and I think, you know, part of the conversation right tonight on our client is, um, well, if the district had actually been purchasing all of the office supplies, what, what would we have versus staff member contribution? So we kind of found a middle ground in there for that whole...
All right. Pool chemicals is pretty consistent, pool supplies, what is pool supplies, at thirty bucks?
So, I had to look at that in the lot in the budget and go into like the detail on it, and it ended up, it was wristbands, which we used for a while to differentiate between, um, like moonlight swim and regular swim.
Copy, copy. Makes sense. All right, thank you. Vehicle maintenance. We used to use them, so we don't now?
We haven't, well, we don't have a swim that's broken out that way, it's something that we may use, uh, as we're figuring out how to figure the water over for people that attend multiple classes, so, I landed in there, um, you know, with a thought that we may buy in with those again.
Yeah, we need to do that. Which vehicle is gonna be repaired? Is that, is one of the ones we get used?
Use a special one.
The, the van or the?
The van.
You've got a surplus off that Safari thing.
Another guy. All right. Fuel expenses, consistent. Vehicle maintenance is all right. Concession expenses?
So I did bring concessions down. I believe the 60% number is what we used for that. I do have a small supply. We had a donation over the summer that was our initial start-up to be able to resell concessions when we reopen. And it's just like with retail, like I explained, there's a done minimally incrementally to make sure that they're in line for that.
How does IT service contracts could increase so much?
Uh, different provider.
And the same thing with the point of sale?
So the point of sale went down because I don't, you guys may remember back at the beginning of the year where the website was down and Steve was trying to figure out where it went. So this was finally solved. The website was being hosted by the point of sale company. So this reduction reflects that among those costs.
Okay, can we go back up to minor purchases dash others?
Yeah.
The 3,000?
Yeah, so we went from $45 to $3,045.
So our major purchases are in the hundreds of dollars, but our minor purchases, that's where it really gets us.
Yes.
We don't have to worry about $13.
Nightmares afterwards.
So we're looking at the replacement of some of the furniture and stuff that's here and up here and the visible.
Small office furniture type stuff that is badly needed to be replaced. Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to know what it was. Thank you very much.
But that's minor purchases other?
It may not be the best place for it. We may want to find a happier home for it.
Oh, sorry. I didn't understand the 2,000 because I was thinking that.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So the IT different provider, like you said, he's also given us a couple months for free or something, right?
I think half price for six months.
Okay, so that's, that's the whole story there?
So employee background checks, we're not going to have to up that as we get new employees. You think that 500 will cover everything?
I think it should be sufficient. Most of them are $3 to $5 per background check, so this should be more than ample.
Okay. Wow. Page six.
The same security. The 2,500 for computer maintenance, is the IT service contract not cover that? Because, you know, we jumped up from $200.
Because the board had requested that we separate the service contract from actual computer maintenance. So the difference is that we get a limited amount in the service contract and then any additional maintenance we need, they charge us at a reduced hourly rate. As we're looking at replacing the server and reworking the router and some of that other stuff and just getting things more functional and up to the current technology, we anticipate that we would need that extra maintenance time.
So my next question would be payroll processing. We see a drastic difference between the prelim and 17 budget to our proposed 2019 budget and that would be because of?
So in 2017, and that's the number that Commissioner Shingalton took for the prelim budget, we were using paychecks to process payroll. That was something over $200 per payroll they process. Now we're processing through QuickBooks and it is $2 per blade per payroll. So it's a great reduction for us.
Excellent. Thank you for explaining. That's awesome.
That was something that Steve and Joanne looked on prior to their departures.
And you already explained advertising when you got the, all right. Insurance. Does the insurance, Rex, reflect what we need to pay in December?
It does. We have to submit the budget, which we're talking about, in order to get a quote from the insurance company in the past, I guess.
Remember with this company last two years, our rate was largely based off our revenue?
Well, I mean, there were effectively two rates. One was under a certain threshold and the other was over. But my, my question about the insurance is, are we expecting, so, and again, I know that this is, it's really difficult to have this conversation before you can know what the real outcome is, but I, so I, I'm rephrasing my question before it comes out of my mouth. So one of the options that we had talked about was payment plans. And if, if we, because I believe from our cash position, we probably need to do it that way. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe so. Because we haven't, I'm not, well, anyway, that's not important right now. But I think we're going to need to do that. And if we do do that and we would pay part this year and part next year, we would need in that insurance number to reflect like one and a half. Do you understand what I mean? So, so that if, so that next year at the end of 2019, we would expect to pay $60,000, but that if we defer part of our payment for, for next year's insurance and, and put off $30,000 or something like that, that we would expect to pay actually more like $90,000 next year.
I think I know what you're, you're saying. I know that we have the option. I mean, are you talking about borrowing money to pay in part, borrowing to pay the whole thing and then part that you're talking about is, is paying on that?
It would be the financing thing that we talked about last time.
I mean, I would recommend that instead of doing it that way, that we pay out of district money now, pay to the premium. And then as needed, we borrow money to get us through until April.
We don't have the ability to borrow money. So, I mean, just, just to be clear. What's that?
Todd Grant said that you know that.
Okay. I, you know, that... I'm not sure. I, I feel like this, this makes me really uncomfortable because this is a large money. I mean, this is 10%, well, not anymore. It's, this is, but it's still at least like 7% of our budget. And I feel like it's, it's really uncomfortable. That's the word. And I'm not saying that at you. I'm saying that to everyone. It's uncomfortable. And, and I know, you know, part of that being that it's going to happen in this, you know, we as a board should have some say in how, in how we're making major purchases. And that is a major purchase, whether it's a requirement or not. And I'm just concerned because, you know, we should understand our cash position. We should understand what our strategy is for this stuff. What, what, like, I'm sorry, I usually like to try to have an answer. I don't know what the answer is because of the timeline, but we really need to have subsequent discussions about this, I think.
So I think the comment here is, do we need to, the crux of this is, do we need to add to the 60 tonight? And then we need to have a follow-on, which, because we have discussion that we cannot have tonight revolving around this that we can have here shortly at a regular meeting. So do we need to change the 60 by another 30 to represent the 90, which would be one and a half, as you, you know, mentioned? So instead of having it at 60, we make it 90,000? Because if we did it in six months, we deferred payment for six months. In 2019, we'd actually pay three times instead of just twice, if you think about it, because we defer that payment again. So we'd actually pay not just for 2019, but we'd start to pay for the first half of 2020. So that would be, that would be, no, that would be the other one.
For the second half of 2019?
2019. And the whole of 2020. Yes, thank you. Nope, I just said it wrong. Thank you for clarifying. So do we need to make that 90? Is that what the board liked to do and with the directors concurrents?
I think that's a good idea.
But do we know if, since the insurance is based on our revenue, our revenue is much greater than what we were talking about?
I don't know if it did defer the payment for that reason.
No, I'm not talking about the differing part. I'm talking about, is the insurance going to be 60,000 or is it going to be?
Less.
Less.
Less, okay.
And we want to be conservative with the expenses and make sure they're as high as they possibly could be and then adjust later.
As I understand it, and either of you feel free to correct me, but as I understand it, if, so, so I believe it would be based on also this, right? So based on our expected revenues is what our insurance would be based on. And based on, I believe previously the threshold was given to the like 35 versus 60, whatever, was approximately 125,000. I think that's, that's what it was. If that was accurate, then, then we would be in a higher threshold.
That's what I was.
Yes.
We're going to move on to utilities?
So we're going to move that to 90 or are we going to leave it at 60?
I'd say move it to 90.
90? Ms. Schardt?
I think 90.
Ms. Schardt?
I think until we have up.
Yeah.
Okay, let's make that 90, please. All right. All right, moving on to utilities?
Yeah, a few things there. So the boiler, the 17 actual was 55, 985. We budgeted for, well, the prelim was 67. But that was just kind of worst case when we didn't really have any actuals. I think now that we have actuals, now that we, we know that the boiler is running at about a 30% fuel savings, also the fact that we're going to be closed for a month. So what's that, another 8%, 38% savings at that point? Also, we know that PSE is reducing the fuel rate by, I think it was 11%. I think it was, I mean, so that's, that's huge, right? I mean, that's huge. So I think, I think we need to reflect some of the actual numbers that we're seeing there. And, but with the trend of staying conservative, also the spa boiler, the hot tub's probably going to be down for six months. So reducing that by 25% is probably fair. The electricity, you know, our limited operations is obviously going to be reflected as well. So my suggestion there is, is that we move the, the actual numbers from 2017 from the boiler, the electricity in the spa, spa boiler over. And I think our savings will be substantially more than that, but I also think that's conservative. I mean, I think, I think...
To include pool, patron water?
Not, not the patron water, but the boiler, electricity and spa boiler, spa and patron boiler.
Move boiler, electricity and spa boiler, the numbers from 2017.
The actual, yes. That's what I think we should do there. I mean, for instance, on, on the pool boiler, the rough numbers are the pool boiler's probably going to cost $37,000 to run this year.
I don't think we have enough data though. We don't, we only have like one to two months.
Two months, yeah, two months.
Okay, but that's not really, it's not really a trend. And I think the thing that we have to consider is that, I mean, part of, part of the impact comes with how severe a winter is. And I mean, there, there's impact with that as well. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I understand where you're coming from. I absolutely do. And I think if we, if, if that's where we end up, I think that would be amazing if, if our rates are really going down. So these were, these were increased by 20% because we were told initially that to expect at least a 10% increase. And so if we can, I, I'm not sure how to justify keeping the numbers the same. I just feel like we don't have enough data.
And we already got the rate reduction in the mail and we know we're going to be closed for a month. So between those two things. Ms. Schardt?
Well, I mean, I don't know that we have to have them this high, but I think if we up them, you know, a little bit from what we paid in 2017, it's not, this is a good idea.
Conservative, keep the expenses higher.
I would, I would much rather at this point have to make that, I would, I would love to be in the, I know where you're coming from. We've got things running well now, but I would much rather be at a six-month readjustment where we're going, holy cow, we've got eight months of data now, not two months. Eight months of data and then we can change these numbers to reflect after the winter when we're in the summer. You know, because by then we will be in the summer. I'd much rather use the higher numbers for this to be conservative and then in the summer go, hey, you know what? We're good here and we can see the savings somewhere else.
Like you said, it could be reconciled later. Exactly.
Mr. Chair? I would suggest we follow Commissioner Harden's suggestion. Well, I, I think, I think somewhere in the middle is probably a better, you know, if, if we really expect it to go down, but we project that maybe it goes up a little bit, that maybe we're a little bit closer.
So what, what numbers are we going to suggest then for the boiler? I'll take them one by one. So 67 is the high, 55, 9 is the low?
About 60.
60. Electricity, we've got 52 is the high and 43, 3 is the low. Pat, you're on a roll. Keep going.
You're higher.
Oh, wow. I feel important.
48. 48. Thank you, Pat.
I like it. You guys are good.
And for the spa boiler, we have 10, 1 as the high and 8, 4 is the low.
I think that's a big one, knowing the hot tub's broke for, for several years.
It's not broken, it just needs to be resurfaced, right?
Yeah, resurfaced and the grates need replaced. It's for the health.
So we could probably take that down to 8, 4.
Sure.
And be real conservative.
Yeah, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. Anything else on page six? All right, going to page seven.
I'm sorry, I did have one other thing.
Yes, ma'am. Going back to page six. Go ahead.
Clover Valley Cool Water?
Clover Valley.
Did we say that enough? Because I'm just...
Park, yes.
Is that, is that high enough? It got increased by, I don't know what I'm saying.
I just increased everything 20 when I...
Yeah, I guess that's fine.
Good? All right, page seven. Ball fields.
Are those numbers for the 10,000 and the 5,000, are they still there? For the Clover Valley ball fields and the dog park, are there actual projects and costs? Or is that just a, we want to spend a lot of money out at the, at Clover Valley and these are nice round numbers?
When I did it, it was the second.
Yeah, and those, we just transferred your numbers over.
And, and I think that would be the, it was, it was trying to demonstrate the commitment to the improvement. So, you know, we had several folks, for example, from Babe Ruth's come in here and talk about the improvements that were needed. It was tried, it was to try to demonstrate, yes, we are committed. Because I think any, for example, any improvements in the ball fields, I think that conversation needs to happen with them to prioritize, to, you know, look at costs for things. I mean, there are, there are subsequent conversations that need to happen to figure out in what order those things happen.
All right, moving down to audit. We won't have an audit this year. It's kind of nice.
Really, no?
No?
And with the NWPRD repair and maintenance?
Ah, thank you.
Jacked up $100,000?
Oh, wow. Yes, thank you. Let's go back up that. Yeah!
Again, the original preliminary budget, Commissioner Shingalton had at the bottom, the money to go to the reserve, money for improvements, all of that. We can't really submit a budget to the county that has those notes at the bottom like that that they don't put into the final format. So I think that she had $75,000 preliminary maintenance and repair number. We put in $100,000 just to give the little buffer for some additional repairs that we may run into as we get started on projects. So that's where that number came from.
Board's good with that? All right, moving down, no audit this year.
I thought we got it every year.
Every, I thought so too.
It was like two, every two or three years, I thought. So we had 13, so 13, wait, 13, 16 or 17?
17. We played for it, well, I think it was at the end of 16 and we paid for it in 17. So I think it'll come possibly at the end of 19.
And then we'll pay for it in '20.
Okay, okay.
There we go.
I know that we had the option to have it done a year earlier to significant savings and due to the budget situation, we opted not to do that.
Clean water utility, that's pretty, employee advertising services, election services. We only have two...
Two seats.
Two seats coming open next year.
But there's not going to be a whole lot else on the budget, on the ballot.
Ballot.
Because it's not, it's off year.
Okay. So nobody's allowed to resign? Government service fees, eleven, refunds?
So we cut the refund number down to three thousand, which was the original budget number for two thousand seventeen. The bulk of that sixty-eight hundred of that difference was due to people that requested refunds at the time of eleven thousand. And since that will be issued forward, we don't have a way to do save it there.
Okay. Waters. Any other questions on page seven? Once again, I wanna thank the staff for the time and effort, especially on short notice. So I'm putting this together without an ops plan, with so many unknowns. The board, I know, appreciates that very much, especially considering everybody's been sick. So that's the presentation from the director and Julie? Do I have anything from the board?
Mr. Chair? Prior to, I know I don't keep more, but prior to doing that, can we talk about what, even what the timeframe would be for that operational plan? You know, even just to set whether it's one milestone to get us started or when we wanna have it completed by? We, we need some, we need something and we need to kind of have an owner to drive it, whether, or, or an owner on the board and an owner on the staff or some, we need something and I'm happy to make a motion, but I just think that we should talk about that a little bit.
So knowing, knowing as part of the budget discussion, as part of the budget discussion, we realize that there also needs to be a secondary piece to this, which is an operational plan. And to have us something jointly together by the end of, by our December meeting.
It's just like the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, that's correct, which is, is it Tuesday the eighteenth? Or is it, it is Tuesday the eighteenth?
So maybe a draft by then?
A draft for, format from that. And I, I, as the chair, I'll be more than happy to help the director with that. And if anybody else would like to help, that'd be great. Take another member, but I would be happy to help the director with that. So we will have that by the eighteenth. To answer some of those things and to talk about a way forward. And that will be a draft to get basically a, a framework with which to work for next year. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Shingleton?
I move that we accept the, that we approve, rather, of the proposed budget with the changes noted during this conversation.
Second.
Second, bye.
You can.
Too late, you're on there. Discussion. No further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
We have a budget.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Shingleton?
Um, could, can we, when the numbers get updated, could you send us all a copy of the approved budget? I know that probably sounds ridiculous, but I know sometimes in the past we haven't, you know, and then we're like looking around for it. I'm like, was this the right one or this the right one? We only have one, but it'd be great if we could have an approved one and obviously posted to the website as well. Question?
Yes. And then, do you need, Rex, do you need us to sign anything this evening that needs to go down to county? Okay, excellent.
Form doesn't need to be signed by everybody?
Yeah, just one, two, three, so. Yes.
One more thing.
Yes.
I, I, I think this is part of the budget as well. But by, by the end of business on Friday, we have to purchase insurance, correct? So before we leave here, are, are we comfortable letting him do that? Or do we need to schedule a meeting before?
A, we can't actually talk about that, unfortunately, it's not on the agenda.
I just thought it was part of the budget possible.
We can.
He doesn't have his own authority, actually.
That is another good point, is that, that's, that exceeds the director's spend authority for insurance. So if we need to have another special meeting before Friday, we need at least twenty-four hours' notice to put that together. So please let me know either this evening or tomorrow. Okay? And like I said, we'll have to put that together, then we can't talk about that tonight because that was not on the agenda. We can talk offline about it. There's nothing else?
Individually offline.
Individually offline, good point, yes, thank you for clarifying. No, no, that's a good point. All right.
I think that it was approved on the budget. No.
I know, right?
Yeah.
Never mind.
Yeah. All right, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to adjourn.
Second?
May I, excuse me, may I interrupt?
No, you may not, thank you. Sorry, you may, no, no, stop, you can't, you're not allowed to interrupt, it's not open for public comment. You can talk to us individually afterwards, sir, but unfortunately, the rules are, we, we don't allow for public comment.
So there's no public comment at any of your meetings?
Not at this meeting tonight. I'll, I'll be happy to talk to you in just a second, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. So I have a motion by Wendy to adjourn. I have a second by Commissioner Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned at seven forty-five, thank you.
Regular meetings, that's all.